You are watching XS Laporte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Michigan City Planning Department Public Hearing. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot XS Laporte County dot org.
Okay, Skylar, floor is yours.
Okay, um, good afternoon. Uh, today is Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The official time is two thirty, thereabouts, uh, PM. Uh, we're at Michigan City Common Council Chambers at one hundred East Michigan Boulevard. And the purpose of this public hearing, uh, today is to, we have been requested by Amtrak for an exemption to our noise ordinance from the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak. Um, and I would like to preface this before I hand it over to Attorney LaPage to, um, set the record that this hearing is not about demolition. This hearing is about noise ordinance and an exemption to that. With that, Attorney LaPage, I'm going to hand it over to you to just set the record so that we have everything that we need in our public hearing.
Um, so for purposes of the record, uh, the city received a request, a petition from Amtrak uh, honor about August thirteenth of twenty twenty-four, asking for an exemption of the city's noise ordinances that are set by, um, our local ordinance. Uh, specifically, section forty-six dash sixty-four, um, of our Indiana, I'm sorry, Michigan City Municipal Code allows, um, for an individual or corporate entity to ask for an exemption from any of our noise ordinance. Uh, by virtue of our local ordinance, the hearing shall be, uh, conducted by the, uh, Planning Department and the Planning Department, uh, to issue any, uh, exemptions after a hearing. Uh, for purposes of the record, uh, notice of this hearing was published, um, in the Laporte County Herald Dispatch. Uh, notice was also sent to Amtrak as well as, uh, the notice being filed with the Michigan City Common Council and the Michigan City Board of Works. Uh, we do have representatives from Amtrak here today, uh, to present the petition. So, uh, Mr. President, if I'll turn it back over to you if you would like to call uh, the members from Amtrak down to, uh, present the petition and also state their names.
Yes, uh, let's have them come on up to the podium. Um, a representative from Amtrak, I'm sorry, I'm not there today. I, but just act like I'm sitting next to, um, Attorney LaPage and just speak to Ms. LaPage. And thank you for being here in person.
All right, well, first, uh, thank you for, uh, having us. My name is Lorenzo Perez. I am a program manager for Amtrak. Um, as a program manager, I'm going to be managing this, uh, this project for Amtrak. I'll let my colleagues here introduce themselves as well.
Excellent.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Doug Computer. I'm with Jacob's Engineering Group. Uh, we are the consultant engineer of record, uh, working for Amtrak on this project, um, designing the, uh, demolition of structure.
Martin Sandoval, Manager of Government Affairs for the Midwest.
Excellent. Um, so I guess what we need to know is just tell us a little bit about what, what kind of noise we're dealing with. Uh, go back, actually, give us this, uh, uh, an overview of the project and then, and then go into kinda, uh, what, what kind of noise are we talking about and need for exemption, things like that? For right now, there might be other questions, but for now, that seems like the logical next step.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. So a little bit of history for about the project. This, uh, coal tower that's approximately at the intersection of, uh, East Second Street and Liberty Trail. It was constructed approximately, you know, a hundred years ago, back in the, uh, when locomotives, uh, the old steam locomotives were highly used. And, uh, obviously now we use electromotive diesel locomotives ever since about the nineteen sixties. Uh, that coal tower plant was decommissioned. So now that hasn't been in use for roughly sixty years. So it's been slowly degrading over time. Uh, obviously, if you guys, you know, ever drive by there or just kind of look, you know, stand by the crossing. You can see that's, you know, parts of it have already collapsed and, uh, there's concrete that's slowly degrading over time. So what we're trying to do is to, you know, prevent any future safety concerns. We're trying to, you know, be proactive and demo the, the coal tower. One of the things that has changed from our initial letter is the timing. So right now we're looking at, uh, at the earliest of September twenty twenty-five timeframe and not pushing into later years based on, um, our approval from the Federal Railroad Administration. So as far as the actual work on how we're planning to do it, um, we're planning, the reason we're asking for, uh, the exemption to the noise ordinance is we're planning a fourteen-day, um, outage, uh, a train outage over the tracks to do a controlled demo of the tower. So basically using, uh, tall excavators and using jackhammer, jackhammering equipment, uh, cutting equip, you know, sawing equipment, um, steel cutting equipment. Um, so the, you know, obviously there'll be vehicles around, um, dump trucks. The majority of the noise obviously would be the jackham, jackhammering, the saw cutting of the concrete. So it's supposed to be a fourteen-day controlled demo, so no big explosions. And the reason we're doing a fourteen-day outage is to be able to do it safely and, uh, fastly and efficiently, um, without causing major harm to anybody doing the work around the area.
Um, will you be doing this demo? Um, will it be like a, what's the hours of operation for the demo? Just for-
Yeah, so during that, so the majority of the, of the demo, you know, the, will be during the fourteen days, it'll be twenty-four seven operation. That's what we think, what we can get through the work in. And also the, the reason we're doing the, the line cut or the service outage is to uh, minimally disrupt the passengers, right? So, you know, by being able to do this twenty-four seven, we can shorten our demo window to fourteen, fourteen days or two weeks.
Okay. And, 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 and what, originally when we were talking about this, we were a few, we were like years out on this. Now we're, we're looking at a September twenty twenty-four, hence probably the need for-
No, no, I mean, uh, I guess I make twenty twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, twenty twenty-five, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so originally the letter said, uh, May or June or summer of twenty twenty-five. Now we pushed it to September twenty-five at the earliest based on, uh, some approvals we need from the FRA.
Got it, okay, okay. Okay.
And in, in order for us to get the approval for, from the FRA, we need to be able to have the exemption in place.
Gotcha, okay. Um, Amber, am, am I forgetting any other questions? Um, I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm, I don't really know. We've never been, uh, never held a public hearing to hear an exemption to the noise ordinance. So this will be my first for me, so, um, bear with us here.
The first for us too.
Um, twenty-four hours a day, fourteen days, September twenty twenty-five frame time, frame. Um, yeah, Amber, am I forgetting anything to ask? I feel like they gave a pretty good overview.
No, I, I don't, unless they have anything else they would like to say. I know we do have several, uh, members of the public here, um, at the right time that you could turn it over for any kind of comments or questions.
Um, anything else that Amtrak would like to add, uh, just for a record and just, you know, any, anything, anything further?
I would just make, um, ma- make a reference that there's eight trains per day that go through those, through our tracks, through that coal tower. So again, safety is priority number one. So the maintenance of upkeeping this building is, is just not, does make any sense at this point. And so we don't want, we want, as Lorenzo mentioned, we want to be proactive. Cause as it's deteriorating at this moment, and we don't want it to have, you know, deteriorate at the times when these trains are passing through on daily basis. So again, for us, it's really a safety matter to get this done as quickly as possible without it prolonging multiple days and just trying to make this a fourteen-day process. Um, as there is multiple passengers that go through the, and freights that go through this corridor on a regular basis.
Uh, if I may ask one more question, if it wasn't for the exemption, do you have a timeframe of what that would be? Or would the FRA, you just say, no way, because it's going to be a four-month closure, three-month closure? Does that make sense what I'm asking? Is there, I get, I, my, my point is it, without this, there's a hardship with respect to, um, it would be, the FRA may not grant it because it would be such a long timeframe for eight trains a day.
Yes, so, so we performed an analysis based on industry standard means and methods of, you know, what the rate of production would be, um, to safely demolish the tower. Um, so you know, that, you know, using standard, um, equipment, you know, limitations with regards to right-of-way access, um, and obviously, you know, ensuring it's done in a safe manner. Um, that's kind of driving the fourteen-day period, assuming twenty-four seven operations. Um, if those, your operations had to stop and start and stop and start, obviously it's, it's driven by, um, you know, a lot of other factors there, but there would be a significantly longer impact.
Okay.
And also, you know, also worthy of mention, you know, we work for the railroad, safety is our first priority. And every time you're stopping, starting, stopping, starting, you're introducing, you know, inherent hazards into the operation.
Okay. My next question is, will there be other things other than noise? Will there be vibrations, et cetera, extreme vibrations? Or do you, do you, um, do you suppose, do you intend, do, do you think there'll be anything like that as well as noise?
I think the, I mean, the, the extreme vibration would be coming from the, obviously the equipment, the excavators and the dump trucks moving back and forth through the, through the site. And then obviously the, the jackhammering that will, that will happen, you know? That would be the, the most that we can think of at this point. Again, when we bid this out, it's going to be contractor means and methods. So right now we're just kind of, um, talking about how we went into the project and designed it.
Okay, let's, um, let's hear from the public and then I may have a few more questions, but let's, let's open it up for public comment at this time. You guys can sit, you don't have to stand, you guys can sit.
Yeah, thank you.
Skylar, I know you can't see, but we do have members of the public here that are going to be coming down. You can just state your name, any address.
Kowal, K O W A L, two fourteen Pine Wood Drive, Michigan City. And I just want to make sure I understand it. They want an exemption from the quiet zone ordinance?
No, exemption from the noise.
No, from the noise ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, cause it was reported wrong. It was reported that they want an exemption from the quiet zone or from the noise ordinance.
I'm not sure who reported that.
Okay, it's from the, just the noise.
The noise ordinance. So right now we have an ordinance that says you can only do construction within certain periods of time between eight PM and seven AM. Uh, well, I'm sorry, you can't do it between eight PM and seven AM. Um, so they're asking for an exemption to that.
Yeah, okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
We still have a quiet zone, yes.
Yeah, quiet zone stays in place for sure.
Any other?
Any other comments?
There are, Skylar.
Okay.
Paul Prisbalinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Um, I have a question, oh, a couple of questions about how much dust? Has there been any core samples taken of the building to find out what the binders were on the material that was used a hundred years ago? And, um, the, uh, the amount of equipment that's going to be and what kind of equipment? Are, are we talking about these T-Rex demolishers? And if that is the case, the amount of dust generated from that facility on where it's going to float? Um, I live in the neighborhood of St. Anthony's Hospital and we had quite a few dust plumes over our area and which was not handled by the Plan Department because there were complaints turned in. I think that you need to look at this very carefully on how it's going to affect the neighborhood. I understand that Criterion's over there, but just to the northwest, there is a exclusive, um, housing project over there. And one other comment I'd like to make is that I see that there are no council members here, elected council members to this hearing to represent their area. And, and I think that my concerns that they want to go twenty-four hours a day, um, is that going to reroute traffic through the south side of Michigan City? Or, uh, what's going to happen with the traffic that they're not going to put through on, uh, the construction, the rehab site? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know what, um, do, do you want to give Amtrak the opportunity to respond to that, Skylar? Or do you want to take all public comments first?
Let's, um, I'm writing down some of the questions, so let's go ahead and, um, actually, sure, let's let the Amtrak respond. Yeah, we can do it that way. This one's kind of a little bit out of the ordinary. Don, I see you down there, I'll get right back to you, okay?
Sure, so, um, I, I think I tried to jot some notes down of the couple of questions there. I'll touch on them and if there's any I missed, um, please feel free to point out. Um, I think the first item you touched on is, um, any core samples or, uh, material testing. Um, so we did have a, uh, specialty engineering firm, um, that specializes in material testing. Um, they actually brought a man lift out to site, um, and performed a series of tests on the existing tower. Um, as we can imagine, you know, just like the Romans built things and they're still around. Calling Tower is, uh, pretty sturdy, um, in some areas. Um, the, the concrete is about eight thousand PSI. Uh, we did test some of the concrete. Um, there is also probably, you know, some contaminants inside the, the tower itself. Um, part of what we've included in our design is the contractor is required to have a signed and sealed mitigation plan for those kind of hazards, um, that is once approved by an engineer, um, in the state of Indiana, as well as by Amtrak, um, and the third-party consultant. Um, so that process will be, it'll be a plan in place. It's not like they're just going to go out there and start jackhammering. They're going to have to specify what their means and methods are, such as, you know, using, using water, um, using different dust suppression systems, um, before they go out there and start jackhammering at the structure. Um, you also touched on traffic. Um, the intent here is we've prepared a design, uh, that we believe can be, um, the demolition accomplished inside the existing railroad right of way. Um, there will probably be some impact to traffic, right? There's going to be trucks, there may be temporary closures, um, that need to be put in place. Um, but the intent was, was that US twenty would remain open to traffic. Um, there may be a lane drop, there may be some MOT present, um, but that was the goal. Obviously, the contractor is required before they put that plan, to submit that plan, have those permits submitted to the applicable municipality and for all that to be, you know, kind of go through the appropriate process. Um, we also touched on vibration. Uh, I think yes, you know, there's some of the, the specialty jackhammer type equipment, um, long reach excavators. Um, there will be some vibration on the tower. Um, obviously there's, there's means and methods to mitigate that vibration impact to the surrounding community. Um, there's vibration blankets that can be put in place. Um, and, and like Lorenzo mentioned, right? The contractor will be, um, required to follow these means and methods. And, you know, there'll be multiple steps in the process to approve what those mitigation measures are, um, before the contractor starts going out there and chipping away at concrete.
I can take part of that. Which is, and then I guess it's part, part of your question was about the increase in traffic. So when we do this, uh, I guess, uh, what we would call a line cut or, or cutting the service, we would essentially, uh, bus people from Chicago to, you know, say New Buffalo. So there'd be, I guess, two bu, you know, buses and an increase in traffic and buses through the area. But again, when we get, you know, eight trains per day, so it's probably sixteen busters per, per day that would, you know, increase.
So it's not a rerouting of the trains, it's simply a busing situation, which we just had with the NITI situation.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we don't have the track available, but reroute the, the, the trains.
Yep. Um,
I got one other, uh, point to make here is that, did you guys supply a, uh, construction list on the amount of people and equipment type that will be used for that, uh, particular teardown? You know, like how, how many pieces of equipment are you going to have out there? And, and I know that the engineer said that the contractor will have this stuff in place. Well, I think that, you know, since we're having this public hearing right now, we ought to know if that's your intent on what you're going to have the contractor do. Cause we ran into all kinds of problems on the, um, demolition of a hospital here in town and they were not doing that exact thing on dust suppression. And, uh, we had to go round and round with the, uh, Planning Department on getting that done. So I think that these things need to be forthright upfront on what they're going to do before that, that permit or that exemption is ever granted. Thank you.
Don.
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm familiar with this noise ordinance because I had this same problem with a overzealous patrol officer of the Michigan City Police Department regardless of my loan, on-mowing activities about seven years ago. But, you know, I just, well, I mentioned, I'm glad to see this, this structure finally going down. It's, it should have been torn down thirty years ago, if you ask me. Um, you know, I really don't have a problem with them doing the work twenty-four seven, but, you know, we don't want to have a, open up the Pandora's box for every contractor wanting to do their work twenty-four seven. And initially, I meant, you know, Amtrak, they've been really, really lousy community partner for us, in my opinion. Uh, I know they closed their station stop right behind here, uh, right here by the old, uh, by the old train depot. Back, I think that was April twelfth of two thousand twenty-two, they closed it. They still got their signage up for their station stop. They got the old platform and all the weeds and that, and on their property is really overgrown. I said, I want to read this ordinance, it's nineteen point zero five. Uh, prohibited signs under subsection K, obsolete signs, and you see this all over the city. Signs that advertise a product that is no longer made, an event that has already occurred or a business that, or a business that has closed are prohibited. The enforcement shall provide a letter of the property owner, given the set time for the removal of the obsolete signs. All that needs to be taken down and removed. If you want to ride the Wolverine train to either Detroit, Chicago, you gotta go up to New Buffalo. You kind of totally abandoned that station stop and all that needs to be cleaned up now. Uh, it's, I don't know, we just had a issue with a US twelve crossing last year about Amtrak when, about the singing sands trail. You know, if you want, it's almost impossible to get in touch with these people with these rare, between the railroads and your company, utility companies. I don't know who's worse. Thank you.
Um, ma'am, can you come to the microphone? Uh, sorry, he can't hear you.
Don, I'll get to you, I see you.
Yeah, I apologize. So when did they want to start the work?
They, they said in September of next year at the earliest.
If you have to get DNR approval, because I don't know if you know, there was, um, there used to be, um,
Can you talk into the mic?
Nesting in there. So if you have to get permission, since I don't know if they're protected species or not.
Don, it's your turn.
Afternoon, everyone. City Councilman in large, Don Prisbalinski, two fifteen Gardena Street. And the question that I have for the, uh, gentlemen from the construction, uh, demolition company is, uh, I know we want to do this fourteen days, twenty-four hours, non-stop, but can you explain to everyone here and to the public why we can't do it? Twelve-hour shifts. And the reason I say that, right now, we may say, well, we just want to get it done, get it done quickly. But still, we have to take into consideration the, uh, the folks in the neighborhood and in that, in that part of town where the noise will be going twenty-four seven. You'll have vehicles there, you'll have demolition equipment, uh, operating. And I just think in consideration of those folks, that we should just be doing this twelve hours, uh, twelve hours a day instead of twenty-four. So could you please explain that point? Thank you.
I'll, I'll give you time to come, uh, Scott, if you don't mind. Yeah. Can I, can I give them a chance to ask answers for, answer Scott the question?
You got it, Skylar.
Yeah, just give me a minute. Amtrak, uh, do you have a, like, a response to that? I mean, it's kind of the same question I was asking in a little bit different manner. Um, he's being very specific about the timeframes.
Yes, of course.
There's a consideration for that, I guess is the question.
There was, um, yeah, I apologize if this is a bit of a lame the answer, but I want to, you know, kind of articulate the engineering process we went through here. Um, as we've all seen, you know, from driving by, right? That the tower is inherently unstable, right? There are pieces of concrete falling off, um, you know, the, the loading, um, room and operator's room, um, have collapsed in the past ten years. Um, and the, the kind of the reason for the continuous outage versus split outage, um, is, you know, once w- we, we prepared a pretty detailed engineering document, um, but once the jackhammering and demolition starts on the structure, we're introducing an inherent amount of instability into the structure. And once that process starts to stop it and allow folks to, you'll go around, whether there's trains going by, whether there's cars going by, um, we're introducing inherently unsafe situation. Um, and with the goal of, um, demolishing the structure in the safest method possible, um, the, the safest process is really a, um, discreet, continuous, um, engineered approach, which is individual pieces continuously managing that with, you know, twenty-four seven folks on the ground, eyes on the structure, um, versus, you know, kind of demolishing the structure, everything shut down, folks walk away and, you know, there's no way of knowing how that structure is going to react in the interim period. Um, so that's kind of the, the driver of, you know, safety is really the driver of the kind of plan of operation there.
Thank you. Um, Scott?
My boy, my boy, David. Hello, Scott Malinter in Kenwood Place. Um, some of my questions were answered, appreciate that. Um, to address the immediate point of this hearing, I, I feel we should, um, facilitate and expedite this request. I think less disruption is better than a longer disruption. Engineers explained why they can't do it piecemeal. Um, something else that was brought to my attention as part of the dust mitigation plan is that since that structure has existed for a hundred years, not only does it have the inherent toxins from the coal dust that's been within it, but industrial fallout over the last hundred years that has simply fallen onto the concrete is also, uh, toxified it, for lack of a better word. So I think the dust mitigation plan really has to be, uh, well documented and well executed. Um, and while we have Amtrak here, I know it's a little off subject. I'd be interested to know what their plans are for the swing bridge, which are, which is, which is within sight of this cult tower. Um, that is, I think, a hundred and twenty-plus years old and is a major link in the, in the system that has no plan for renewal at this time. So since we have a representative for Amtrak, I'd be very appreciative if maybe he could, uh, key us in on that. But again, I think we should facilitate this plan, thank you.
Um, I'll leave it with Amtrak that you don't need to respond to the bridge. If you don't, if you would like to, you can, but we're not here to hear about the bridge. We really need to stay on topic.
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street again. Uh, wouldn't it be possible for Amtrak to re-run this construction, to reroute their trains on the CSX tracks that run by Ames Field? I know I wrote, I wrote the Pierre Marquette Amtrak train from St. Joseph, Michigan to Chicago and that's the route they, they go, you know, the, what, just reroute them during their, during this time? Uh, that, 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 that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, so, yes. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Paul, I'll give you one more time and this is it.
Well, you didn't, you, I'll, I'll say this, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you did not set your parameters at the beginning of this meeting. And that is, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you have to do that. So I'm, I'll speak, you, if you want to do it now, I personally think you're out of order. But that's just my personal view from knowing Robert's Rules of Order.
That's fine.
What I want to know is that from the engineer, and I think this is a critical question, because you're talking about the demolition has to be continuous and America has been building superstructures since eighteen eighties. Does that building have a superstructure skeleton inside of it? Or is it just a continuous poured concrete? Do you know in your plans or records that it has a, a I-beam skeleton? So if it does have I-beam skeleton, shouldn't you be taking it apart in such a manner that meets that and that the superstructure will help stabilize the structure? It's yours.
You can respond if you like.
Yeah, sure, I'm, I'm happy to touch on that. Um, so the, we did perform a pretty detailed document review, um, as well as a study of the tower. Um, it does not have an I-beam structure. Um, the, the structure is, um, predominantly cast-in-place concrete, um, with- Um, the, the structure is, um, predominantly cast in place concrete, um, with re- reinforced, um, bars inside. Um, but the entire structure is a series of concrete pores. Um, it is not an I-beam frame with concrete cast around it tied into the I-beams. Uh, it was poured from the ground up with concrete, you know, forms, reinforced concrete. Which inherently, you know, touching on the instability aspect, right?
Is it rebarred in that?
Is there a rebar? Yes.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak? Amber, is anyone else?
Uh, no.
Is there anyone online?
Uh, Don Prisbalinsky wants to ask one more question.
Go ahead, Don.
Question or comment? As, as far as the, uh, the dem- the demolition, so once you, you guys come in there and you start from the top down. Yeah, what, what are you good, what kind of mechanism are you going to be using? Uh, knock it down with a ball and crane or T-Rex or what are you using? So I mean, so, because well, my point is, is once you start at the top, okay, then you're going to start coming down with it. You, you're telling me that you just can't stop at a certain point? And then everything's going to fall to the ground, right? And you're going to be picking it up. Well, I mean, you're going to pick it up once, uh, demolition stops and then you go in there and clean it up and then start over again. That you can't stop at a certain point and come back. You're going to tell me that the structure all the way down is going to be unsafe from that point on? That's getting back to my twelve hours versus twenty-four hour, uh, point. Can you comment on that? I'm still trying to get that in my, uh, I'm not saying I'm totally against the twenty-four hours. I'm just trying to understand why we can't go with twelve and get that point, put, put the bill.
Yeah, I guess we I guess without, without doing a full detail analysis, we can't tell, we can't say that it's going to, you know, the fact of structure integrity, once we start, you know, once we start demoing it. So in order for us to do that, do it the way you're proposing, is we would need to, you know, stop for the day at, you know, at the end of our twelve hours, have structural engineers do a structural analysis for a couple of days. Tell us it's fine, the standing that the building's not going to fall, right? So you're extending the duration of the demo because you can't say it's not going to, it might not fall, but it also might, once you start jackhammering and stop, right? We, so we can't say that right now. But in order for us to be able to say it's not going to fall, it's going to require a detailed analysis, which may take, you know, a couple of days for something to do.
Yeah. All right, are there anyone other comments from the public at this time? If there aren't anymore, are there any online? I don't see anyone online, um, other than me and counsel. Yeah. Uh, Amber, are there any any other things that can I close? At this time, I'll close public comments. I'm hearing none. Um, I just want to reiterate that, that you won't be asking to, um, close any roads that uh, local roads with respect to trail, um, I'm sorry, a Liberty Trail or the crossing there, Washington Park Boulevard, uh, north. That, uh, you won't need any of that. And that you, have you coordinated with U S Alco and the surrounding property owners there?
I, I think they're shaking their head because I don't think that, I think that it's not determined at this point if they need the road closures.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just clarify my comment.
Yeah, just clear, just clarify, yeah.
The, the intent is, you know, we've, we've designed this demolition to occur, um, in the railroad right of way. Um, you know, there will potentially be impacts to the roadway, whether it's, you know, lane closures, partial closures, just to allow trucks to enter and exit safely. Um, but the intent there is to, the demolition was designed to minimize the impacts to both, um, you know, the, the surrounding main roads as well as the grade crossing on Sunday.
Excellent. Um, I just know there's a lot of railroad, I think there's like maybe six tracks there at that intersection. So it's, it's kind of a weird location in general with respect to railroad crossings. Um, and then you have coordinated, they have coordinated with the property owners are shaking their heads. So, okay. Um, with that, Amber, am I missing anything? Anything else that I have?
No.
Or from a legal standpoint with our hearing?
No, at this point, since the hearing's closed, either you can render a decision right now or you can take it under advisement and then issue, um, an order.
I'd like to take it under advisement at this time and I'd like to issue an order. I will issue an order within the next week. Is that reasonable? That gives me and Amber time to discuss and write up the said order.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, I appreciate everyone's time today. Um, I am track. Thank you for being here today. Um, thank you for having a pretty complete, um, you know, and, and, you know, analysis of what, what's going on and providing us, uh, some, a lot of detail. Um, anyways, and then I would ask this one thing, uh, of you. Uh, who, who will be the head? I'm sorry, I closed the meeting, but my real question is, if there are issues, will we be instructed to who to contact if we have issues, something falls in the road, et cetera? We need to close down something. Wh- what would be that process? I'm so sorry. I don't mean to put you back on the spot. Or would that be determined at a later date?
Yeah, I mean, once, once we have an actual plan in place and a contractor in place, we can, we can make sure we, we reach back out and give you the proper lines of communication, whether it be the, the contractor, uh, who, eh, with an Amtrak will be in charge of the field activities. So we can provide that info for you, for you at that time when it happens.
Okay, and that may be what we put in our letter. We, we want to hear that back from, to us, some type of I won't call it a condition, but like give us someone to contact if, if need be.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Yeah. Um, I have no further questions at this time. Uh, turning the page, I'll just, I guess, just end the hearing this time.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, I'll call this the handed hearing, uh, to an end. I appreciate all the public's, uh, comments. They're great comments. And, um, um, yeah, if you have other comments or want to know additional things, you have some Amtrak representatives there, feel, please feel free to talk to them if they're willing to after this meeting is over. Thank you. Have a good day.